Good evening and welcome to Montpelier Civic Forum. And we're on the road to Town Meeting Day 2020. And this is an unusual year because we have a district, District 3, where you have two seats up. When Ashley Hill resigned, we have a one-year term that has a candidate, and we have three candidates for the two-year term of replacing Glenn Hutchinson, who decided that he wasn't going to run again. In District 2, we have Connor Casey running unopposed. In District 1, we have Donna Bate running unopposed. And we actually have a great show where we put the two of them together. And that's a two-parter that's about a half an hour apiece, well worth watching. And we also have Ann Watson explaining why we should reelect her mayor again, running against no one. You can see a trend going. And that's a good show, too. And we have our school board candidates, who are all going to be elected in the same trend you can see. And then we have an excellent show with Bill Fraser talking about the city budget. Libby is going to discuss the school budget. Both of those are excellent shows as well. And tonight, we are in the school district in one of the three-year terms with Jill Remick, who's come to visit us. Jill, thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Why in the world are you running for the board?
So I am a very proud resident of Montpelier. I have been for 15 years. I grew up in St. Johnsbury. I do have a daughter in the system, but I am actually running despite that, not because of it, because...
What do you mean?
Well, I would still like to be able to participate as a parent, and so that's why I've been hesitant to step up and run for the board in the past. But she's getting older and I...
She's getting older? What grade is she in?
She's in 6th grade.
Trust me, that's not old.
And so I have several years of experience. I worked for a long time as the Policy and Legislative Affairs Director at the Agency of Education. And then most recently now, I'm at the Tax Department in the Property Tax Division. So I kind of have a unique perspective in that I can actually understand how the very complex machinations that take you from when you vote on a school budget to what your tax rate ends up being, what shows up on your property tax bill. And also a pretty good handle on education policy and the things that Montpelier is doing well and the things that we want to work on. And so I was encouraged to run by a few folks, and I thought, I'm running out of reasons to say no, and I would like to offer my services.
Are you aware of the time commitment?
Yes, that's why I was a little hesitant. Definitely depending on which board member you talk to, it's a pretty major time commitment. It's true. I like to read a lot, and I know that it's going to cut back on the number of books I'm going to get to read this year, but I do think the more that I've... Now that I've put myself out there and I've been talking to folks about it, I'm actually pretty excited about it, because I do think I have something of value to offer the board and the community.
When did you move to Montpelier?
In 2003. I graduated from Linden State College, and then I worked at the Times Argus for a few years and lived in Northfield. And then my husband and I bought our house, and we've been there ever since.
So you were working on Main Street in the Times Argus, yes?
Yes, yep, yep.
Now we have Shippey.
Yeah.
What was Montpelier like growing up in St. Johnsbury? Did you go to the academy?
I went to St. Johnsbury Academy, yep, which was outstanding. Montpelier was the place that you'd come to get your driver's test, and it felt very big and funky and fun. I remember there was a burrito cart when I got my driver's permit, and that was like a really exciting day for me, that I actually parallel parked in the big city of Montpelier and got a burrito from a cart. So it was always, you know...
Did you try and become a page?
No, I had two friends that were, though. They were pretty excited about that. We'd like to host somebody someday. Yeah, so raising a child in Montpelier versus how I grew up in rural St. Jay is very different.
Well, I'm taking you to, what was the perception of Montpelier High School from the academy? Or didn't you even think of it?
Didn't even think about it, honestly.
There was no sports interaction or anything?
St. Johnsbury was a pretty big high school and had pretty big rivalry, obviously, with Linden Institute, and so... And I was not... I didn't play sports in high school. So I wasn't quite as, you know, we'd go and cheer them on, but we were always playing bigger schools than Montpelier.
Now, if I'm doing my math correctly, in 2003, when you moved here, you did not have a child?
Correct.
What was the school... What was your perception of the school not having a child in it? So if you could remember back to you and your husband, Jesse, when you didn't have a child in the school, what your perception of the Montpelier School District was?
I think definitely...
You were young parents-to-be.
Yes, and we, you know, we ended up in our house in downtown Montpelier, which was not necessarily what we originally, you know, working towards. And it's been an absolute surprise blessing in every way to raise a kid here. I think honestly, coming in from the outside as someone who was just a property owner, I was and continue to some extent to wonder about, you know, the U-32-Montpelier merger and why that wasn't happening. And, you know, I would go to like my brother-in-law's games at U-32 and saw this big school and couldn't figure out why Montpelier and U-32 weren't one. Now that I'm here and I have a child going through the system, and she can walk easily to all three schools, it's pretty great. But I still want to make sure that there's a great deal of rigor, especially at the high school level, because what we got at St. Johnsbury Academy was such a unique experience. You know, we had students from all over the world. We had every possible AP course, every possible sport, music, art, drama.
Let me walk you through the merger. If we were to do extensive repairs to Main Street Middle School, we'd essentially be closing the door forever to the notion of merging with U-32 and picking up a critical mass of students at one of the two high schools, or one of the two schools, in order to offer more AP classes, more art classes. Do you think that it's inevitable that the merger will never happen?
Gosh, I would not even dare to estimate. I have to do a lot more research about what the plan is for the middle school. The building is definitely...
Older.
Older, and it's tight. They don't have room to do the things that they need to do there. And that's such a tough age, that's such a critical age for students, that it would be great if there was, you know, more outdoor space and if the blessing could be easier. You know, there's definitely factors to that, but there's more than one way to figure it out. And I don't know that you could ever say, never say never about merging or closing buildings or thinking about using the space differently. I think there's lots of options on the table. But that's a good point, that if we really invest in it, then that's a commitment for the immediate future, for sure.
We've been on a very slow growth curve in the schools. On the margin, we're picking up students. But we never projected to have the kinds of student body that we had when you came here, or the decade before.
Right.
Is the high school sustainable?
I think it is, but we definitely lose a significant number of families and students as kids get older, because as families want to buy a home or move into a bigger apartment or something like that, they do not have those options in Montpelier. If we were coming to Montpelier now, I don't think there'd be a house we could afford to buy in Montpelier. So we have to actually think about, they're not in isolation, those two problems. So, you know, when my daughter was in kindergarten, those classes were overflowing with kids of all different backgrounds and kids from all different socioeconomic status. And as they get older, the families that are choosing to buy a home or want to, you know, move into, commit somewhere, cannot afford to stay in Montpelier, and they're moving out. So I feel like I want to be a part of kind of continuing that conversation about how to support more housing for families and everybody, so that we can keep those kids for the long term, because the numbers dwindle at high school pretty significantly.
Then you have the people my age and my wife's age, and who's going to replace us? You know, will we be replaced by young families?
Right. Right now, what I see in the real estate market in Montpelier is it's really, really hard for two working parents with kids, or not with kids, but two working individuals to be able to afford... There's very few houses that are within the price range of what a Vermont salary or two Vermont salaries are. So we really need to broaden our tax base a little bit in Montpelier.
What happens to our subsidized lunch people, who are renters?
Right, right. Well, the more people we get in here, the broader the base. You know, we have more, we'll have more taxpayers, we'll have a little bit more of a property tax base. You know, Montpelier is so... For the number of actual residents, like you and I, who live in a home and we pay our property taxes, versus the amount of services and supports that a city this size needs, it's not equitable. We have so many state buildings, we have so many...
So we're on to, could you explain what the PILOT is about?
Sure, so PILOT is the payment...
What does it stand for?
Yeah, it's the Payment in Lieu of Taxes that the state makes to towns for state-owned buildings. And federally, there's federal PILOT dollars as well, so there's, you know, the federal forest. But basically, the city of Montpelier is filled with a lot of state office buildings. I work in one of them, and it's a beautiful building, and I'm so glad to work in downtown Montpelier, so it's certainly not a complaint. But it is not taxable, it's tax-exempt, because it's a state-owned building. So the state, we work with the Buildings and General Services to calculate a payment in lieu of taxes that the state makes to each of the cities that have those... It's sort of a way to say, well, we're not paying taxes, but here's a payment in lieu of taxes, because there's services that the city is providing by hosting these places. But if you think about the concentration of state office buildings and other tax-exempt businesses...
Not-for-profits.
And nonprofits, and which are all what make Montpelier great, it also means there's the tax burden falls on those of us who own property and are not tax-exempt. So it's a really tough balance, because it... Part of what makes Montpelier great is that my kid can walk to the library and walk to the church and walk to school and walk to my office, and we have this great downtown. But the reality is, you're dividing up that tax burden of like a city of 20,000 people among 8,000 of us. And so it's expensive. We need more houses and businesses here, I think.
In terms of our schools, again, I'm going to walk you to, you didn't have a child in the school. What was the perception of the strength of the Montpelier school that you thought you would put a child in?
Well, I had the advantage of working at the Agency of Education, and part of my job...
So you were looking at the stats?
Was analyzing data all the time about different schools and, you know, for better or for worse, there are rankings that come out about where schools place. And Montpelier always did very well on all the standardized tests, AP and it was the KNECAP.
AP being?
Advanced Placement Courses.
KNECAP being?
KNECAP being the New England Common Assessment Program, which is now, I think kids now know it, it's the SBAK, the standardized...
Boy, we've done, how many acronyms within a matter of a minute?
Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium. So they're the federally required standardized tests. And what we do in Vermont, because we're small, is we partner up with neighboring states and other states to share in that test development, so we're not paying quite as much, you know. So we share. I don't know who we're partnering with SBAK anymore, because I haven't been following that as closely, but there's other states that use SBAK. So I always would do, you know, we would do press releases annually about how Vermont students did and how Vermont schools did, and Montpelier was always, always did very well. The thing is that if you start to look into the data deeper about Vermont and then Montpelier as a subset of Vermont, if you compare Vermont to like Iowa or another state that is homogeneous, that is not particularly diverse and does not have any kind of urban hub or extreme rural to the state, you know, to the way that like Wyoming or Alaska does, we... We're not as great as we always think we are. Vermont always says, you know, we've got the best whatever, but part of that is a result of our demographics. So we can't just sort of rest on our laurels and feel like we're doing everything right.
Well, for the large part, we're a well-educated community. And a well-educated community that really prides itself, I think our civic gathering point is a library, is a public library. You know, where people take pride, people use that public library more, I suppose, than in many other communities across the country. Are we testing as well as we should, given the education of the parents and the like?
I don't know that I could ever say we are or are not meeting a certain bar.
You would be on the board, on the school board, establishing expectations.
Well, right, the superintendent and the principals of the schools are definitely more tightly aligned to the instructional leadership aspect, but no, we would definitely be looking at data about how we're doing. I guess, I guess what I meant to say is more, while there's always room for improvement, I'm not, I'm not either... I'm not either satisfied nor dissatisfied with our results.
Where is there room for improvement, in your mind?
Well, I think because we are small and limited in what we can offer in our space and in our budget, I think we do not have as many AP or other track...
Advanced Placement.
Advanced Placement courses. I think part of what made, you know, the federal No Child Left Behind, which has definitely, you know, had some very admirable points to it, about making sure that we're meeting all students wherever they are, means that we're also not able to challenge some students as much as we would like, or challenge them as individuals as much as we would like. We're all, you know, they're all still ushering through the same classroom. You know, the classroom arrangement and the time of day and all that is just like it was 100 years ago. You know, the school bell rings at 3:00 PM, and instead of taking that extra time to, you know, offer some gifted and talented courses or offer a different whatever, you know, a lot of kids are wandering around to the library, hanging out outside.
Don't we recognize that in our flexible pathways?
Ideally. It's really hard to, you know, I was at the Agency of Education when we implemented the educational quality standards that allowed for flexible pathways, and that is absolutely the goal. It is very time-intensive to do that, and...
Could you explain what flexible pathways are?
Sure, so essentially, you know, students can, you know, within reason, be demonstrating their progress at certain subjects in their own time, whether it's they're doing, you know, an independent learning project or selecting a particular subject that they want to dig deeper into. The idea being that they're building sort of their own portfolio and working at their own pace and studying things that they're engaged in, and so they're demonstrating those proficiencies in, you know, research, writing, exposition, presenting, that are sort of those cross skills that are useful.
Aren't those the proficiencies necessary for proficiency-based graduation?
Yes, yes. And I'm happy to say, it seems like nationally that the proficiency-based graduation has not hindered kids' ability to get into college as much as there was, there was definitely that worry that they were...
Okay, now let's back up 10 seconds. What is proficiency-based graduation and what is that requirement?
Right, so essentially, there's standards that all students have to meet, but then you basically are demonstrating how far along on the way to proficiency that you are. So if you can demonstrate your proficiency in these certain content areas and these certain skill sets, then you graduate with, you know, basically a transcript that shows your proficiency-based performance for school, so that then you can take that on to college and/or beyond. The reality is, it's hard to do something like that when you're still using the same, you know, we're not getting more teachers, which would be great for exactly this sort of reason. You know, the students are still learning how to drive their own learning to that way. I think depending on what school and what classroom you're in, it's more or less successful. We definitely hear in some schools in other parts of the state, it's not working very well, or the students aren't getting what they need. But Montpelier seems to be doing pretty well in that regard.
There are some people in the community who would say that our student-teacher ratio is really low, and that compared to other states, and that we should be producing more, given that ratio is so low.
Excuse me. I think there's more to that data point than people might realize. Frankly, there's a lot of social and emotional behaviors that are in the classroom, there are, that take a lot of students' time and take a lot of the core teacher-classroom time that is not able to be spent on instructional learning.
Is that behavioral concerns?
Absolutely. And it can be for lots of reasons. You know, maybe the students hungry, or they're tired. You know, there's lots of things that happen outside of the classroom that the school has no, you know, no oversight over that impact a student's ability to learn and cooperate and participate in a traditional classroom. So what schools have to do a lot of times is have instructional aides to come in and kind of help referee, but also help guide, you know, individual learning and help students get where they need to go. And so that takes staff. So I have not once in my time with my daughter in a Montpelier school felt like she had a small staff-student ratio. She was always in a large classroom with one key instructional leader, and I wouldn't want less. So I think the student-staff ratio is taking into account a lot of staff members that are not the same as a core instructional educator, so it's not really telling the whole story. It's not like we have a classroom at the elementary, middle school with 10 kids for one teacher. That's not, that's not what actually is happening in the room.
Now, the unspoken thing that you were looking at when you were looking at educational data is the achievement gap between the children who are on subsidized and free lunches and the rest of the class. And that's not something that started in 2019, 2018, 2017, but I believe that the board has said, "We want to look at this, and we want to address this, and we want to close that gap." And Libby and her team have been charged with putting together a plan that would accomplish that. You were looking at that data when you were working at the Department of Education, and you said, "Well, Montpelier comes out looking really good, but there's that other side where probably there are very few Vermont school districts that look very good in those terms." When you're casting light on that, that doesn't make the press releases.
Right.
What's the feeling, when you were there in the state, what was the feeling on the gap, on the achievement gap?
Yeah, it's certainly not unique to Montpelier or Vermont. I mean, this is a national issue.
Well, it's No Child Left Behind.
Right, and so I think what was great about No Child Left Behind is that it forced us to talk about it and say it and record that and publicize that in a way that could have been easily brushed under the rug in past years. You have to look at your free and reduced lunch student performance, your overall student performance, your male versus female student performance.
And how many ethnic minorities we have.
For the towns in Vermont that have ethnic, you know, have the breakdown of, you know, by ethnicity, like all those breakdowns, you can't ignore what those statistics are telling you, and so...
What are those statistics telling us?
There are advantages that are so subtle or taken for granted, we don't even realize.
What would those be?
So here's a great example. So the other night, we had a group of parents who went to meet the two finalists for the middle school principal. And I was one of those parents, and it was the same parents. We all have the ability, the time, the resources to take an hour out of our evening to weigh in on something like this. But if you're a family that you're working two jobs, or you have, you aren't able to find childcare for your kids, you can go and do that, or you're, you know, you're working as a single parent trying to feed your... There's lots of those things that I think a lot of us take for granted in Montpelier. I was able to do that. I had, my child was home, she was fed, she had another adult in the house who could help her with her homework, and I didn't have anything to lose by going and participating. But when you go to an event like that, it really sort of highlights the people who are not able to participate that way. And so the same thing happens with the students. So, you know, if a student is in the classroom and they have not, there's not someone who's able to be at home focused because they're working two or three jobs, which a lot of Vermonters are doing, or they, they're hungry, or they're tired, or they're cold, because, you know, there's lots of those things that play out in how a student can learn and be ready to learn. We also, you know, we pay for our child's athletic equipment and registration for camps, all of those things that enrich her experience and position her well to perform, that a lot of us have in Montpelier. A lot of people don't, and the kids just continue to get left behind.
Boy, doesn't that sound hopeless to you? That we're not going to be able to change the condition of how much they have, you know, it just sounds like those kinds of barriers are beyond the ability of the school to change.
Right, well, so I think, I think there are things that the school does do. I think it was great when Vermont decided that there wasn't going to be a reduced lunch price that they were going to provide free lunch for students. I think that's...
So the pejorative is taken away?
Yes, yes, it's not, there's not a ticket that you have to take that says you're reduced versus free or whatever. I think our schools do a phenomenal job of trying not to have kids have to pay for any of their supplies. There always seem to be, at least a lot of the camps and trainings around here, there always seem to be scholarships available. And I think also, especially at the middle school, obviously I'm focused on that because I have a child there, but they have a lot of really good enrichment for after-school. And that's really key, because that window of time between 3:00 and 5:00 PM, when kids are unsupervised or they're not, you know, they may not be eating a very healthy snack, or they may not have anyone helping them with their homework, or they may be, you know, out and about and catching a cold, that period of time, just nationally, it's not just Vermont, but like that period of time is a really dangerous time for kids that age, and it's where they can lose a lot of important growth. And so I think the middle school has done a really good job of having lots of opportunities, including just having the library open for that period of time, no cost, you don't have to sign up or commit, you can go and do your homework or read a book or get some help, and it's just, it's a resource to the kids. Those little things do help, and those do matter, and they do make a difference, I think.
Well, something else that makes a difference are parents volunteering in the schools and the community stepping up for the schools. And I'm thinking particularly of Matt McLean's Community-Based Learning and the number of sites around the city that do step forward to take high school students in. That's strength.
Absolutely, and that's, those connections will help those students forever. They will have that experience, they will have that connection, they may use that as a reference for a job down the road. I mean, those, that connection and that experience opens doors in a way that, it's such a smart, it's such a smart solution, it really is.
We're a white, middle-class community. Do you feel that the children who are ethnically different have a challenge blending in to this community?
I'm not one, so I don't know, but I have to believe that this is Vermont in general, especially like I said, growing up in the Northeast Kingdom, that there are things that a lot of us just assume and assume that we're doing right, or assume that we're being sensitive about that we are not. And so I can imagine that that would be really challenging. I think Montpelier overall is a really good community, and I feel like even just since when I was in high school versus now that my daughter's getting into that age, the acceptance and the support of marginalized groups that was non-existent when, when I was even in high school, which was, you know, 25 years ago.
What would a marginalized group be, in your mind?
So here's an example. So we have, we have gender-neutral bathrooms all over Vermont now. Not a thing, it's just a normal part of their school day. When I was in high school, two girls were not allowed to dance together. It was considered completely inappropriate. And this, this was really sort of highlighted for me when I was watching a movie with my daughter, and they said, "The first rule of this dance, no same-sex couples." And that was sort of how it was when we were kids, and she was like, "Wait, that was, that was actually a thing?" Because to her, they've grown up with a much better perspective on, on all aspects of just individuality that we were just, we just took for granted, we didn't know any different. Where I grew up, the real disparities were with folks who were in poverty versus not. You know, there's a huge amount of poverty in the Kingdom, and so there was definitely stigmas attached to that.
Is there stigma attached, do you think, coming in from Roxbury to Montpelier?
Oh, I don't know about that. There's so few kids, too.
Well, I agree, but...
You know, I didn't really think of it that way. I remember when we were first, early on, having those conversations and, you know, I just was, again, counting my stars that the house we happened to buy is above the middle school, which was not our intention when we bought the house, that that's a long way to drive to go to school. But the folks in Roxbury were saying, "Well, we choose to live here. We know that it's a haul, and that's part of why we choose to live here. We're okay with that." And so it just became sort of a non-issue. And no, I think it's, I think it's been a great arrangement. I think it's always good to boost our enrollment, and I think it's always good for those kids to be able to be in a bigger group where they can have more art, after-school, sports, you know, all, anytime you have a consolidation of students, you get more opportunities.
We also get inefficiency. I mean, that school is extremely small, has 30 or 40 students in it, and it has to be staffed. It will exist for a certain period of time, that was written into the contract, but after that, its fate is open. What you thought on that?
I would definitely like to hear more from the other Roxbury board members, to hear how they're experiencing it. I think the idea that those younger grades really... I think the idea that those younger grades really should be local, especially pre-K kindergarten 1, 2. I think there's definitely value in continuing to have some sort of a community school for that age group, absolutely. So I'm not, I'm not able to really say that I have a position one way or the other about it right now. But I think it was a smart move to, to move our middle and high school kids here. And I think it was a smart move to beef up the early, early grades there because pre-K is so incredibly important to set them on the right path. And if they have that opportunity, then let's do that. But there definitely could be ways we could use the buildings differently. But that's part of why I want to get on the board and hear what, what the plans are and hear what Roxbury folks have to say about it.
In terms of inclusivity, what do you say to the religious conservatives who feel like the schools are moving more and more away from their core values?
I don't think a religious constituency has a say in how a public school should be organized.
No, but they do have a say in terms of how their child, you know, views the world, how the world inside that school views their child.
I, as someone who grew up here and now has a child in the system, I am so proud of how far we have come as a society. And I, I don't see the harm in being erring on the side of inclusive. And I'm, I'm really, like I said, I'm impressed that that's just sort of part of our kids' lexicon now. They don't even, they don't think anything of saying what pronoun they are or it's just part of how they, and it's really, it really makes me proud to be in a community that values that and it's so much a part of who we are. And school is where, you know, school is still really tough for a lot of kids. And nobody's ever going to be happy with everything that happens in school.
Tough in what way for a lot of kids?
On a daily basis, they're dealing with hormones, friendship issues.
Sounds like you're describing the middle school.
Yep, you know, there's a great deal on high school students that you're supposed to somehow figure out what you're going to do with the rest of your life by the time you're applying to college when you're 17, 18 years old. That's a huge amount of pressure. You know, in elementary school, there's so many things that kids are dealing with. There's, there's health, there's family, there's, you know, there's how you feel about how you're doing on your standardized test. You know, there's, there's lots of
Now, that's in real world, that's not the cyber-world pressures.
No, right, not even taking into account, you know. I do think there's a sort of a malaise in general in our society dealing with, you know, social media and the news these days that is definitely impacting our kids too. It's just, it's, I don't think middle school or high school is ever going to be easy for anybody, maybe for a few, but
How do you see the role of the board evolving?
So I think it's really important that a board know what is and is not their purview. So when I was at Agency of Education, you know, we worked with school boards, superintendents, principals on a daily basis. I think it's really important that our role is to, to model the best practices and to support the administration and the schools in carrying out their long-term plans and also being a sounding board and a way to connect with the community. But it is not appropriate for a school board member to, to micromanage in any way the instructional practices at a particular school or to, or to, you know, go over the superintendent's head when advocating for something. I mean, the whole idea is that we are a board of community members who are a sounding board and also responsible for balancing the needs of every taxpayer in Vermont with the needs of the school and articulating that in both directions.
But you're also informal ombudsman.
Yeah. Yes, I've been told that I need to plan on getting a lot of emails and stopped on the street, you know, questions and opinions. And I was one of those people who did that as a parent, so I, I get it. And I do think that our board has been pretty good about hearing folks out. Sometimes you just need to have somebody hear you out so that the administration or the principal or the school board can hear what the, what's happening at the school, how that's actually, you know, impacting the families.
Jill, I want to thank you so very much for being with me tonight.
Thank you, this was fun.
And I want to thank you guys for watching this show. And as I said at the beginning and I'll say at the end, watch the other shows. They're all really, really good. All of the candidates are good. Watch Libby's show on the school budget and watch the show that Bill has on the city budget. One more thing, make sure that you get out and vote on Town Meeting Day. And I know you're thinking, well, all these people are running unopposed. But get out there and vote on these budgets because voting on Town Meeting Day is our collective responsibility and our collective democracy. Thank you very much for your time.